Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this Monday, April 24, 2023, meeting of the Lake County School Board. I'd like to call us to order, and if you would, please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Legions. First, we'll get started by looking at the agenda for tonight. Superintendent, do you have any changes or deletions?
We do. I know we are pulling item 8.04. It is not ready for this evening. The agenda was also revised last week with the chairman's permission to add item 8.10 and revise existing item 10.06. And as I mentioned, 10.04 is being pulled for no action.
All right, excellent. In addition to that, I have a couple of public input cards related to 8.08, the third-party administrator of a healthcare plan, so we'll pull that item for separate consideration so those folks can speak more timely associated with that particular item. Board members, did you have any others that you'd like to pull for separate consideration tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, let's approve some amendments. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the amendments from the School Board Workshop, April 3, 2023, executive session for school safety, April 3, 2023, and executive session for collective bargaining, 8/3/2023.
There's our recommendation. A motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. Any questions or comments before voting? All right, now seeing any, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries unanimously 5-0. And with that, we get to start off with something very, very exciting. Who is leading this particular presentation?
It'll be Mr. Cohen.
Excellent. Wonderful. Welcome.
Come on up. So, members of the board, superintendent, I'm Dave Cohen. I'm the aviation program specialist for Lake County Schools. Within aviation, since the Wright brothers were flying, we mark the ability of human beings to join the birds by quite literally pinning wings on those who have enjoyed that privilege and who have been able to do this. I have the opportunity tonight to be able to watch as Mariah Langford's parents pin wings on her as she has now completed her private pilot certificate. She is the third of our Lake County students to have done this in 21 months, I may add. So tremendously proud of everything she's done. Seventy-seven flying hours, going through takeoffs and landings and emergency procedures and navigation, to the point where, in fact, on her checkride, it's like a flying test, she actually taught her evaluator about a landmark right there near the Umatilla Airport that she has affectionately referred to as the Flower Lake. Something else that happens as a piece of aviation is that flyers get call signs. So I think, given that it's Flower Lake, the call sign of flower might be something that will stick throughout your flying career, Mariah. But at this time, I would like to go ahead and present you, Lake County Schools, private pilot wings, ask your parents to come forward and pin these on you.
a very, very proud principal in the background there, Ms. Llewellyn, so she's capturing it all on film, I think, for you. But also, I notice that there are so many other special guests here who are so excited to congratulate you on this opportunity. Mr. Cohen, I don't know if it might be appropriate for you to kind of highlight who is here. I see Scott Blankenship there in the background. And tell us about the others. Who's here?
So I will yield to Mariah. She has a list of people she would like to...
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Well, then, let's go to that. Let's go to the star of the show here. Congratulations to you. This is incredible and very impressive.
I do really appreciate y'all taking time out of this meeting to kind of just highlight an amazing thing that's happened to me recently. But I couldn't have done it without all of these amazing folks. So there are so many people I could thank on this journey. It's really been something that's been so near and dear to my heart, and it's been something that has been not only a struggle, but it's been something that can really look back and reflect on things that I've been able to persevere through, but things that I wouldn't have been able to do without them. So I need to say thank you to the Orr family, first and foremost. They paid for my first flight lesson ever, which was something so incredible. Thank you to Mr. Day at my high school, Eastridge, for teaching my engineering class and then now my UAS class, which I've enjoyed so much. And then thank you to Mr. John Rollerson for getting me involved with the Real World Design Challenge and teaching me so many valuable things about flight. And just, he really has invested so much time in me. Thank you to my friends and family who've paid for lessons and for my Uncle Brandon, who's helped me sitting on the phone and just going over things that I didn't understand with me because he's a fellow pilot. Thank you to Stephanie Luke, who's on the board here and tonight, for being a proponent in our aviation in our schools. Thank you to all of these folks at Umatilla who have invested in me, my flight instructors, Mr. Russell, Mr. Dave, and Mr. Mike, who've done so much flight training with me and who've really just cheered me on, which is so special. They do a lot of work with Umatilla High School and just help them to learn and engage aviation in their own community. Also, to thank you to the other men and women who've invested in me and checked in with me every time I'm at the airport, to say, "Hey, Mariah, how are you doing today? How was that lesson? You look a little sweaty." And to the city councilman of the city of Umatilla, thank you. And I need to say thank you to my parents, who drove me back and forth to Umatilla. It's an hour drive both ways, who've paid for all of my lessons, who've invested in me, kept me on the path of not getting distracted, but making sure that I put my work in for every day and just keeping me driven and keeping me excited about flight because it's something that's so special. I just need to thank you, thank the Lord most of all, for giving me success, provision, and protection every time that I fly and just giving me purpose in what I do because I really do love aviation and I can't wait to see where I get to go in the future. But thank y'all so much for this opportunity.
Mariah, before you go too far, I think the board would also like the opportunity to shake your hand and congratulate you. So, that's right. So if you wouldn't mind, you can come around. Yeah, yeah. You got your pilot's license. You're allowed to climb these stairs and elevate yourself above the rest here.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
That kind of success story is what certainly makes us proud to be part of Lake County and to have that level of innovation that we can see students being able to take advantage of. So it's absolutely incredible. With that, it looks like our next item on our agenda tonight involves some public input, and we'll invite Banks Helfrich down first.
Thank you. Banks Helfrich, former Lake County Soil Water Conservation District, Seat 1, chairperson and current candidate, State House District 25, 9100 Sam's Lake Road, Claremont, the Clay Road District. Madam Superintendent, board distinguished guests. I'm choked up. Mariah, so well done. I had the opportunity and the privilege to sit in on a meet-in-the-middle public forum in Claremont last month. I was struck by two things, the figurative sense of meet in the middle and the literal sense of it. The literal sense is that Claremont, Groveland, is actually the middle of the state of Florida, and a bike trail/hiking trail will go right straight through Claremont, and it will meet in the middle. This is an actual physical trail that will be done within the next two to three years. And Claremont is putting together a celebratory hub, a place where you can meet in the middle, take selfies, possibly have a boat slip so boats can come and enjoy it also. The other thing I was struck by was the figurative sense of meet in the middle. We live in a polarized world, a polarized country, a polarized state at times, a polarized city, a county. And wouldn't it be great if South Lake County was that place where we met in the middle, where we came together and we showed the rest of the world, the rest of the country, the rest of the state, how it's done, how we can come together and meet in the middle? Our constitution was created on meeting in the middle, 245 over 245 years ago. So, with that said, I usually do not sing. However, I am a farmer, and I only sing to keep the pests away. There is a song that is very apropos for this moment, and let me see if I can give it a try. It's only like six words, so I won't bore you too much. Baby, why don't you just meet me in the middle? That's why I keep the pest away from my singing. My next farm tour is May 13. It's the second Saturday of every month. I invite everybody on the dais to come. It is a free complimentary tour. It is a taste. Whatever's in season, we pick and eat. We have now peaches if the birds and the ants don't get them. And we also have a takeaway. I give you clippings of trees that you can actually take home with you and grow yourself. And it's a teach. I teach you how to do this. So, Sam's Lake Road, Claremont, Florida, Clay Road District, 9:00 AM, second Saturday of every month. My name is Banks Helfrich. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Independent farmer.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Banks. Kathy Smith, I know you've got a topic unrelated to insurance, so perhaps if you wanted to... Or if you want... Oh, you want to do both?
I can do both.
That's all right. Sure. Go ahead.
I can do both of them.
All right.
Kathy Smith for LCEA. The first item I've talked to several leadership about, but I think we still need to kind of work together in trying to figure out how we can collaborate, find some innovative ways maybe to work with some of the teachers, to try to keep some of the teachers instead of maybe losing so many that we have that aren't being reappointed. I heard Saturday's job fair went great, and so maybe there's some other things we can do to try to make sure that we have more of our teachers that stay here, and hopefully we can retain some more of them. The other item is the insurance item, and all I really wanted to say is we are going to need a lot of communication. It's hard for people to understand the different ways. Of course, bottom line, of course, is money all the time. But for some people, they don't understand that, yes, the deductible's going up, but I'm paying less per month. And so it is understandable that some people are not going to understand what they're getting. And even though the one plan, yes, sounds like it's free, but you still have deductibles, you still have other things. But then, you know, now we're hearing rumors, "Well, we can't go there. We can't go there." So it's going to take a lot of communication around the new insurance ideas. So that's all I really want to say. Thanks.
Important feedback. Thank you so much. With that, we've got a couple of reports on the agenda for tonight, including Special Guest Jacob Canones, the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak now instead of later?
Yes. I can sit down if I'm fine. All right. So the SSAC met on Wednesday, April 5. We had several new students attend who wanted to learn more about the committee and what we do. After some introductions of the potential successors, the committee reviewed the online feedback from the students who attended the SGA Shield Conference in March. The feedback was very positive, and most of the suggestions focused on scheduling of the event. It was suggested that the conference end shorter rather than have three extra workshops because we found that a lot of students, they felt like the day was kind of dragging on after lunch and the games and all that. So we decided to kind of reorder things, make them a little shorter. There'll be, well, if next year's committee agrees to it, there'll be only three workshops, and then the games will follow in the wrap-up of everything. But very exciting news is we're planning on having two next year. One at the beginning of the year, early September-ish, right before all the SGA's get super busy with homecoming and are too busy to attend such a conference, and then another one at the end of the year around March like this time. So my thought was that the first one would be kind of about, like, preparing the SGA students with the skills and abilities that they need to do well in SGA, and then the March conference would be about growth and seeing how far you've come. So other than that, most of the feedback was very positive. On our next meeting, the successors will visit, and they will decide on the date of that September and March one, and then they'll also decide on the theme of it. And our idea was that they would do kind of like a countdown to announce the theme, just like a fun little thing to kind of build up some excitement about it. But other than that, oh, yeah, I forgot to mention, Taverries is planning on hosting the September one, and then Eustis High is planning on hosting the March one. So aside from that, we all kind of discussed each of our schools' prom seasons, how we're kind of wrapping up the year, all the things we did around it, like pep rallies, movie nights, talent shows, you know, all sorts of events that kind of built up to prom and celebrated it. At our next meeting, like I said, each representative will bring their schools' newly-elected 2023-24 SGA presidents, and there they'll, we'll begin the process of handing over the committee responsibilities. We'll also review with them the purpose and expectation of the committee and share with them some lessons learned and next steps. So at our last meeting, we kind of went over ideas of potential issues for them to tackle next year, which include a school-wide recycling program, a countywide SGA scholarship that could possibly partnership with the Education Foundation. We discussed adding a boys volleyball program at our school because I've heard a lot of people want that. And actually, a lot of our schools experimented with a boys volleyball powder puff, and we got really good results from that. Different ways to improve school safety from school to school, you know, kind of boosting, I guess, awareness and that sort of thing, and more ways to improve mental health for both teachers and students. So at the board meeting on May 8th, well, before the board meeting, well, that's when we'll have our final meeting for the year, where we will introduce everyone, and then we'll all move over to the board meeting that same night and where all the SSAC members are invited to attend and be recognized for the services here. I'll also announce their plans for college while introducing them because I feel like it'd be really cool hearing where they're all going. And I'll just, we'll all just thank them for their commitment and service this year. That's all I have for y'all.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, board?
No, I'd just like to congratulate you on being selected as the prom king.
Thank you.
Well done. Congrats.
That was really exciting for me. Thank you, guys.
I'll write you a note.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't understand your card. Kim, did you have something that you wanted to speak that was not particular to 8.08? So we've pulled 8.08, so you could speak on that one timely to that. But do you want to speak on something different? Oh, okay. Well, let me invite you on down. I'm sorry. Come on down.
Thank you. And I really wanted to separate them because I'm speaking for myself right now, not for SEIU.
Very good.
So I really just wanted to say that, you know, I'm glad we all live in the free state of Florida, where workers' rights are trying to be stripped away from them. But if we want to carry a gun, that's not a problem at all. And what really bothers me about that is you, most of you know that I have four grandchildren. Three of my grandchildren call me, text me, call me, ever since they could pick up a phone. My youngest one is 12. He doesn't ever use his phone. You're lucky if he answers it. But I was sitting at work the other day, a couple weeks ago, and I got a text from him. I opened it up, and I realized there's six people on here. So he made a group chat with his family, and I said, and it just said, "No reason" in the message. So I said, "What's up, babe?" "Nothing. Just made this just in case." Well, that night, I heard, he told me he had a threat at school, and he was scared. And he wanted to be able to say something to every one of his family members if he had to. And I just think it's a sad day that we have to deal with this, and our kids do. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, we'll go to you for the attorney report. All right. With that, the consent agenda?
Recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 8.03, 8.05 to 8.07, and 8.09 to 10.08.
A recommendation, a motion by Bill, and a second by Tyler. Any questions or comments before voting on any of that? All right, not seeing any. Let's put that to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And that is unanimous at 5-0. Then we'll go back to 8.08 before we vote on that particular one. Kim, I know you had a card to speak on behalf of SEIU for that one. I can understand your inclination to separate those two comments. Thank you.
So as I said at the workshop, you know, I think this new plan is a very good plan for a lot of people, right? I've been already trying to educate people on it. I want them to know what the difference is. What I'm finding is a lot of our employees that live in the Eustis-Taverries-Umatilla area, they don't go to Orlando Health in Claremont or Leesburg Regional. So all of those are still probably going to keep the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan because they already have established doctors. And for a lot of those employees, $1,000 deductible and another $1,000 to out-of-pocket max is going to be very high on them to do. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for us?
I do. I recommend approval of item 8.08, the healthcare plan, third-party administrator and plan design option.
A motion by Bill and a second. Thank you, Stephanie. Do you have any other comments or questions on that particular item before we vote on it? I'll just certainly echo the sentiments we've heard tonight about the education piece. And I know that was a big component of the workshop, and I think that District, I'm hearing you all take that to significant heart to know that this is quite impactful for our employees and, but unfortunately necessary with the cost of rising health insurance, but certainly very important for everybody to be able to make educated decisions as they do that. So...
And I agree that the communication is going to be the key to that, and so we'll be working on a extensive communication plan to make sure that everyone is informed.
No doubt. Excellent. Thank you for that. All right. With that, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that's 5-0. With that, we have one item under our discussion tab tonight. Superintendent?
And this is approval of item, I can't see it, the staple, 11.01, the RFQ for the construction management at RIS Services for K-8. This is the Mineola Area Relief School Project. I know we had an opportunity at the last meeting to hear from both of the two companies that were the finalists for this particular item. And I, as you can see on the board agenda, that the recommendation is that we award this to Wharton Smith. So certainly open it up to the board at this time for any discussion on the item, but you've heard my recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation.
We've got the recommendation, a motion by Bill and a second by Tyler. Is there any commentary we'd like to offer, any questions before we vote on that?
I'll just add one quick thing. I thought both presentations were thorough, but I just think with them being so close, when you've got a partner that we've had in Wharton Smith for the last three school builds, it doesn't make much sense to change that up right now. So very excited to do this next one with them and see what happens in the future.
All right. Excellent. That's been a strong partnership. All right. Well, with that, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries unanimously 5-0. And then we'll move on to the superintendent for your report.
All right. We have a couple of letters of condolence that were sent since our last meeting. First of all, to Frankie Ben. She's retired from our Food Services Department at Eustis Middle School. She lost her husband, Lee Ben. Also, to the family of Rebecca Jerkins of Villa Avila. She's a former teacher at Leesburg Elementary. And also to the family of Donald Parker, who was the bus driver in Transportation Department. So condolences to those families. We have a few announcements tonight. First of all, we want to congratulate Taverries High School, home of our new state, to a Special Olympic State champion for flag football. So thank you to Coach Matheny and Coach Talmage, who volunteer their time to support these student athletes, and we're extremely proud of them. Since we're talking about Taverries High School, I received this afternoon, and I'm just going to read the very first paragraph of this letter. Am I still in your thunder, Ms. Smith?
Yes, you are.
All right. You know what?
She does that to me all the time.
But I am so excited about this. So I'll read the first paragraph.
That's okay. I'm just going to check all my stuff off.
Okay.
You just go right ahead, Madam Superintendent.
But I tell you, this is the culmination of so much work, and I am just so extremely proud of Mr. Stein, his leadership, Bonnie Watkins, all of the faculty and staff at Taverries High School, to Frances Celus and her department, who have been just tremendous advocates of really what was the original vision of this board, and I think really something that you had really been wanting for Lake County, and now we see it becoming a reality. And it was a lot of work. But it says, "Dear Jake Stein, on behalf of the International Baccalaureate Organization, it is my privilege to inform you that Taverries High School is now an authorized IB World School for Diploma Program. Congratulations to you and your colleagues on this considerable accomplishment. The school will now be added as an authorized school for the Diploma Program on the IB Public Website, including the name and contact information." And then there's a lot more information, but I'm sure that I'll leave something in this letter for Ms. Cunningham.
I really appreciate that.
Were y'all still going to talk about Pitch Night? Because that's coming up this week.
Go right ahead.
All right. So I want to remind you that the final incubator EDU, if you're not familiar with that, I know Mr. Mathias is. I know he's been a strong advocate and supporter of our students. So I can tell you all about this phenomenal event, but it's Pitch Night. It's Friday at the Eustis Community Center. Actually, it's not. It says Pitch Night. Oh, but it's from 10:00 AM to noon, so that's not Pitch Night. That would be Pitch Morning. The event is free and open to the public. This is the Shark Tank-style competition for our student entrepreneurs that I mentioned to you at the last meeting. And now it's time for the students from all three schools, Taverries, Eustis, and Eastridge High, to pitch their business ideas locally and compete for the opportunity to pitch nationally in Chicago this summer. So wish them all the best of luck. Hopefully, you have on your calendar, we have three Construction Academy Habitat Homes that will be turning the keys over to these amazing families. The first presentation is at 8:00 AM Wednesday, April 26 in Leesburg, and the second is at noon on Monday, May 1 in Eustis, and the third is Friday, May 5 in Mascot. So the houses are certainly just an integral part of our Construction Academies and that hand-on experience, and all of the volunteers that are part of making that reality, not only for our students to have those opportunities, but for these families. And lastly, I just want to remind parents who might be watching to please complete the 2023 Parents Stakeholder Survey. The link has been emailed to families and is on our school and district webpages. And I said lastly, but I had one final thing. I know Kathy mentioned the job fair that took place on Saturday. I was in the hallway today, and I overheard some conversation and someone saying that this was the best job fair that they had ever attended and one of the most successful job fairs. So I want to thank our HR staff for putting this together and for all of our principals and administrators that showed up and just excitedly welcoming and encouraging people to come to our schools. And so thank you for all your hard work and spending your Saturday hiring some fabulous teachers, I'm sure. And so that was lastly.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. What a wonderful report. We'll go down the line and see if our board members have anything else to add to that. Bill, how about you?
That was a great report. So I do have one thing, and it was not this past Sunday, but Sunday a week ago, was the first judging and awarding of undiscovered talent with Kelly. And there's a lot of kudos that go out. I want to thank Dr. Anna Marie with Lakefront TV, Kelly Summerall, who put this whole idea together and brought it to me and said, "We want to feature the musical ability of our kids in Lake County." So the undiscovered talent went through a weekly series of television shows. You can watch the finale on lakefronttv.com. Get into the schedule. It's about an hour. The winner happened to be from Lake Mineola High School. Imagine that. Her name is Summerlin Hardy. But it was absolutely well done. I've agreed to sponsor it again for next year, and then after that, they'll open it up probably to the public to some degree. But our kids are amazing, and it's another segment that we don't really highlight enough is the art part. And those kids really sung like angels for the most...
Thankfully, the superintendent didn't take mine, so I appreciate that one. Leesburg High School, shocker, won a state weightlifting boys, boys state weightlifting team championship this past week, the first team weightlifting championship we've ever had in Lake County schools. So Eastridge won soccer a couple of months ago. Leesburg just won weightlifting. So very cool there. That's Leesburg's fourth state title in seven years. Thought that was pretty cool. But Coach Boyer and his team have put out a lot of talent the last several years, both on the individual side and the team side, and finally broke through and got one done. So really excited for them. And then shout out to Brent Fraser again for being Principal of the Year. Can't say that enough, how special that is. And that's all I've got. So thanks.
One more second. Because I looked over and then I knew, I wasn't recognizing somebody, it was Jacob. So also, Eustis High School did all of the production, all of the video, all of the sound. And Jacob came up to me on Sunday with his headset on to say hi. So I appreciate all the hard work you kids did.
Outstanding.
I wanted to reiterate congratulations to Mr. Fraser as well, who's at the top of my list, Principal of the Year for the state of Florida. It's a remarkable accomplishment for him and for our district. And it was really cool. I think I shared this with you guys when I was in Tallahassee a couple of months ago to see our Assistant Principal of the Year picture up at the DOE. And now we'll be able to see Mr. Fraser up there representing Lake County throughout the year. So it's really special and exciting and congratulations to him. I also am very excited for the IB program at Taverri's High School. Mrs. Watkins is phenomenal. Mr. Stein has done so much work. I saw him at Ladies for Education Tournament. I was going to tell you guys that was a huge success. Lots of fun. Student art on display there as well. We have so many administrators that come to support that event. And of course, Carmen and the foundation are exceptional in raising money for our children. But at that event, I asked Mr. Stein if we were official, official yet, and he said the letter was hopefully coming Friday. So congratulations to you and your leadership in getting that done. It's really exciting. Also, on Friday, we have the Taverri's High School Teaching Academy graduation celebration at 1:00. So we will be recognizing eight graduates of that program on Friday and doing a big signing date similar to athletes for our future teachers that are graduating from Taverri's High School. So if any of you guys aren't busy, that'd be amazing. And then I also wanted to mention about the Ladies for Education Golf Tournament, that Dean Shirley, who is our employee, school-related employee of the year, he spoke at lunchtime to all of the group. And it's such a rambunctious group anyway, and he just represented us very well. So it was really exciting to see him shine in that spotlight as well. So that's all I had, but you're making me think I forgot something.
No, I knew that you wanted to talk about Brent, so I left that.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Molly, do you have anything left?
Thank you.
I do.
Excellent.
Because I'm very thorough. I'd like to congratulate Leesburg High School. Their Student Government Association just received a national award from the National Student Council Association. It was an award of excellence. I know that's near and dear to the hearts of many people, so I just want to congratulate them. Also, I had the opportunity last week to attend the cultural celebration at Beverly Shores Elementary, and it was phenomenal. I actually learned a lot of things about some different cultures that we have represented in our schools. So it was phenomenal. I would also say to Mrs. Cronin, I think we feel you and certainly we are concerned. And hopefully, together, we'll be able to come up with some solutions. But I have a grandson, so I feel you. And that's all, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm just so excited to hear the news about the IB program. Certainly the board knows I came with a passion for it in 2014. And sometimes government doesn't move all that quickly, right? But it is exciting when government does move.